Appreciate your presence here at the Board of Trustees' work session. We've got several things to cover on our agenda today, and I also look forward to a very meaningful presentation on the adult education marketing presentation. So Chancellor, hand it to you.
Well, we'll begin with the first three items under Academic and Student Affairs. There are a number of proposals here for programs that are certainly in demand, and I think Dr. Rothmore.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Great, Gene. Gene Dudley will walk us through each of these programs.
Thank you, Chancellor, and it's a pleasure to talk to you, the Board of Trustees. The first action item we have is an Associate and Applied Science degree and certificate in air conditioning and refrigeration for Northeast Alabama Community College. This is a program that's obviously needed in that region, and as we have spoken before, Google has decided to locate in that area, and their needs will be pretty extreme in the HVAC world. And Dr. Campbell had told me that they had the pleasure, or will have the pleasure, of having the site manager of that facility actually be at their commencement and will be the speaker there. So they already have a pretty close relationship with Google, and so there's a pretty big need in that area. One of the things I would like to point out about the program is that this is a new program that fits very nicely with the rest of the technical programs they have, but they are going to have multiple student stackable credentials, NCCER, NOCTI, NAEP, and several others that will help our students be highly prepared for the workforce. The enrollment data that they anticipate will be quite good, and there's plenty of jobs to be had. Are there any questions about that particular one?
Gene, when will that begin?
I think it's starting in fall of this year, so they're getting ready to start.
Okay.
And this will also serve as a dual enrollment program within because it is a high-demand, high-wage area, so that's an excellent opportunity for Northeast. Yes, sir?
Do you have the qualified instructors lined up?
Could you help me with that, Dr. Campbell, the qualified instructors?
We're working on that, but we will hire someone that has the full credentials. We know of several possibilities of certain potential.
Will the local industry that has the HVAC licensing help you in any way?
They have indicated that they would. Dr. Kenner, our workforce development director, has done a really good survey in the industry locally, and very supportive of the program. I feel confident that they would be very willing to hire our graduates and give us support in progress.
I will tell you too, sir, that we have a very strong relationship with the HVAC Board here locally. I do, and every time we've ever called on them to assist us, they've been able to step up and at least put the word out to assist us whenever we need instructors and that sort of thing. So we'll use that leverage if we need to. Okay. Chancellor, would you like for me to move on to the next?
If you would. Yes, are there any other questions on that first item? Very good. Yes, if you'd go ahead and explain the second.
Okay. And the next one we have is an Associate in Applied Science for automotive mechanics for Shelton State Community College in Tuscaloosa. They already have an existing certificate, a short certificate in auto mechanics, but this is actually one of those programs that is being driven directly from business and industry. Mercedes-Benz has a strong need for their post-assembly, for any types of repairs that may be needed to the cars before they actually come out to us as customers. And so this has been, this program has actually been strongly built with business and industry input the whole way through. And they have made some modifications and updates to the facility to make that occur. The students, actually, the program will be NATF certified, so the students will be able to receive the ASE certifications that are associated with that NATF program certification. The instructors will hold the appropriate NATF certifications as well. So this is a program that's a little unique in its structure, but it is actually meeting the direct demands of business and industry. And just so that you know, we will probably have to do some more of this with OEMs that we have in the state. I anticipate that in some of the meetings I've had, so we will have a model that we can use from here on out. Any questions about this particular degree program?
Gene?
Yes, sir.
One question. I know it stands at the bottom that the Alabama Commission on Higher Education approved this program on the March 11 meeting. Will this have to go forward with any other certifications?
No, sir. What we were trying to do is stay within the timeline of eight for these programs, and then with you folks, and then that gives the authority to go to DOE to get all the financial aids situated for the students in the fall.
Okay, any other questions? Go on to number three.
Thank you, sir. The last item here will be an Associate and Applied Science degree and a certificate award in logistics and supply chain management. Shelton State currently has a short certificate program that was built for this program, and it's actually in addition to a high school program that is in the area to serve the local business and industry. So this one, too, is in direct response, and is also has had the, we've had the pleasure of having business and industry at the table to help build the entire program with some of the logistics companies that supply Mercedes particularly, but we've had other companies that have shown an interest and are working with them on this very thing. So the dual enrollment opportunities, once again, for Shelton State, this is an excellent program to help in that regard. You will see on the third page, one of the things that stands out here is that there's a multi, there's multiple areas that the students will be getting training in as far as logistics and material handling, which will make them more suitable for the different workforce areas in the Tuscaloosa area. The students will also get a ready-to-work certification, so they'll go through that process, and that is one of the things that the company's wanting to do, and they want that kind of built into the program, and also some entrepreneurial opportunities within the program itself. And on the following page, on the employment opportunities they talk about, this has really been driven a lot by the students, but also by the companies to have an associate's degree because not only do they have the bigger need for just logistics and supply chain workers out in their facilities, but they need those middle-level supervisors and managers, so this is a stepping stone for those students. And as you can see here, from logistician to logistics managers and et cetera, there's a number of opportunities that students will have coming out of the program. The numbers that they have are quite solid as far as enrollment. There's a great deal of interest, and I think we'll see a tremendous amount of success with this program and growth. And it, too, is serving as a model for other programs that we will have to start in the state. Any questions?
What's the difference in credit hours between a short certificate and an associate's?
Good question. Our short certificates typically range anywhere from nine to 29 credit hours, and our long certificates are from 30 to 60, and then our degrees are up to 76. So once you get further into that, we're building more academics and a few more advanced classes in our technical programs.
I think also this addresses the issue you mentioned there, a meeting with respect to soft skills, because just career training doesn't provide what this associate's degree will for that mid-level management that desperately needs soft skills.
That's correct. And that's often missed. I think there are a lot that just assume, we'll just teach them how to fill in the blank, but it's the holistic approach that we need.
Absolutely. Anything else?
Any other questions? Great, thank you, Gene. The next item, I know we've had some discussion about this, and I think you're aware of the fact that on a regular basis, each of our colleges review their mission statement and tweak it. You heard Mary Scott address that issue earlier today, and this is Northwest Schultz Community College that's bringing their mission statement back to you with a few tweaks. So whether you have any specific questions about that, I know Dr. Lee is here if you do, but that's really what that is about. Okay, going on to fiscal then. This is an item coming from Calhoun Community College, and I'd ask Jane if you would walk us through this one.
Calhoun Community College is requesting to increase their special building fee from $10 to $12 per credit hour, and they're also requesting to implement an access wellness fee of $10 per student per semester, and both of these fees would be effective fall of 2016, this coming fall. The last increase that Calhoun had of their special building fee occurred, was actually approved in August of 2012 by the State Board and implemented in the spring of 2013. And as you see from the action item, their current debt service is over $4 million, and even with this increase, which would be approximately $416,000, their, the revenues generated from this fee will only be 2.5 million, which is a lot less than their debt service. Right now, their annual debt is over $32 million, so this fee would not even nearly cover their current debt service. In addition, the access wellness fee is a fee that they would assess to each student, and this is a per semester fee. This would help maintain their parking lots, but it would also help them to manage and equip a wellness center at the Decatur campus, and they plan to open one of these centers at their Huntsville campus, so it would aid in that as well.
Jane, based on that, everyone with a student ID would have access to the wellness city center facilities?
Correct. Right now, they do not, according to the college, they do not have a lot of participation in the wellness center, so this would probably encourage more students.
Do they have to buy a membership to use it, or they do have access to the one they have now?
Right now, they have to pay, I believe it's $25 per student.
Okay.
But this fee would be only 10 per semester, and everyone would have access. Brian, is that $25 per semester per student, or was that per semester per student? So this would encourage students to participate.
Encourage that, yes. In fact, one of the things that I know I had some conversation with Dr. Clover about this, there is a concern, I think on his part, and of course, it's nothing new nationwide, that wellness programs are desperately needed, and what he would like to see is to get as much of the student body involved as he could. So yes, there will be promotion of that.
Any other questions?
Great, thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to human resources. The Alabama Community College system has salary schedules that come before the trustees on an annual basis. And I believe Paige, are you going to talk a little bit about the salary schedules? Okay, maybe you could just walk them through.
You have in your packets copies of the proposed salary schedules that will be in effect for the 2016 through 2017 employment years. The schedules that you have do reflect the increase of a 4% COLA for all system salary schedules, as well as the ATN salary schedules. Other than the 4% COLA, there are no changes to the notes and to the guidelines for the schedules.
So everything else remain the same with that exception? And I guess I would also mention, just to the Board, you may be aware of the fact that the legislature gave us a, an amount of $2 million in the budget to help address or offset some of the salaries in the career tech area, and we're working on that literally as we speak, to come up with an equitable approach to distributing those dollars. So that's not a, am I correct? That's not a part of this salary schedule?
That's correct. That is not shown in the schedules. That will be a separate handling.
Yep.
Is that an excellent point? Yes, in the COLA bill, there is a statement that no one is to receive more than a 4% increase, which again creates a little bit of an issue with this supplemental dollars, and so that's part of the reason we're working through that and thinking through that. So thank you, that's an important.
So that's associated to the $2 million for career tech and track.
Correct. So if everyone's getting a 4% raise at face value, when it appears that you have locked out anybody else in the system from receiving anything more, and there are, I think there are some ways we can address that, but my concern is that this is done equitably, and that's the concern of all of us, and we will certainly approach it that way.
But the whole point behind that supplemental appropriation was to make us more competitive and to be able to retain instructors in those key areas.
That is correct, based on the market. Exactly, exactly.
Which, at their scale, if my math is correct, is about a $2,000 bump.
Yeah.
4%.
Yeah.
Which is a help, but as far as becoming competitive and retaining those instructors, it doesn't help.
It's not going to do it. It was, the estimate, and we certainly created an estimate, was significantly larger than that in terms of what we needed. Other questions for Paige about the salary schedules? Okay, the next item, I know I've had an opportunity to speak with several of you about this, about this particular item, and both David O'Brien, who's been working on this, and I know Dr. Carla Wicks is also in the audience, can address it, but maybe you could just start, just by kind of refreshing all of our memories what the request is?
Yes, sir.
And then we can go from there.
Good afternoon to you all. Wallace Community College is requesting permission to embark on a two-year major gifts campaign. The campaign will begin in June of 2016 and is entitled "A Matter of Pride." The campaign involves a two-year systematic program to increase awareness of and commitment to the college's programs and services. One of the ways to acknowledge major gifts and allow donors to honor and memorialize others is through the naming of facilities, rooms, laboratories, or other college facilities. The college is requesting the Board's permission, as part of its major gifts campaign, to offer the potential opportunity for the naming of various buildings, rooms, and other facilities on campus. The current Board policy restricts the ability of the college to discuss or negotiate the naming opportunity for facilities on campus in return for a donation without prior Board approval. Thus, what the college is requesting of the Board is permission, as part of its major gifts campaign, to discuss or negotiate with potential donors regarding possible naming opportunities, subject to a subsequent request for approval by the college to the Board for the naming of any specific facility. The college would follow a procedure in connection with its major gifts campaign, and again, with respect to potential naming opportunities, that is set out in the foundation's policy, which is included in your materials. That procedure would include a determination of the exact nature of the gift intention of the donor and the donor's interest in a naming opportunity. That would then be taken to the president of the college and the executive director of the foundation, who would review the materials and then make a determination as to whether a naming opportunity would be appropriate and available. If that is approved at the college and foundation level, a recommendation would be made to the Chancellor for consideration. If the Chancellor were to determine that this particular recommendation was worthy of the Board's consideration, a recommendation would come from the Chancellor for the Board's final approval with regard to the naming of any specific facility or building. Also included in the materials is a schedule of existing buildings and facilities on campus with a proposed amount, as I understand, a minimum for consideration of a naming opportunity. We have Dr. Carolix with us today. I don't know if she wants to add anything to what I've said this afternoon.
I'm certainly here and willing to answer any questions or further explain, but David, you've done a great job. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great. Any questions?
This is kind of trivial. The reference to our policy is the old BOP 1901, and we have updated our policies.
Right, sir. You're exactly correct.
It has the same policy number, but the relative language in terms of the restriction on discussing or presenting any naming opportunities without prior approval of the Board is the same in the old policy as it is the new policy.
Other questions about this?
I guess this is, we're I guess this is, we're setting a precedent for this process going forward essentially by, because there was some concern when we first addressed this, I think we first received this information, that we would be needing to grant a variance to the policy we had just approved. And we were hoping not to do that. But I think what you've laid out is actually exactly the way that it needs to work. And thank you for that clarity on that issue.
Yes, sir. Other questions?
I'd just like to make a comment. Fundraising is not fun. I appreciate your effort in thinking outside of policy on this project.
Thank you. I can truthfully say it is the least enjoyable portion of my job.
Other questions?
I'm just curious, are there other colleges that have had a capital campaign such as this in the past?
I guess the short answer would be yes, although I see this, and matter of fact, Dr. Carolix and I have talked a little bit about the approach. I think her approach is going to be a bit different, a bit unique. But considering this option opens up, again, as Blake was saying, open up some opportunities for others that we've not had. But the idea of naming has always been there, but not to the extent this would provide. So I see this as a real positive step for our colleges, and it allows us to enjoy some of the advantages that our university friends have had for years. So.
Suzanne Harbin, please. Suzanne, stand up. Suzanne Harbin is our director of advancement and executive director of the foundation. She can answer a question about cost of the primary consulting consultant that worked with the feasibility study. The cost of prospecting, about $300,000 online. We did that through the feasibility study period, and it begins to break the foundation listing the cost of the campaign. What's the name of the feasibility study? It's actually reasonable compared to that. It's a potential just rather poor. It's actually reasonable compared to that. It's a potential just rather poor. And the feasibility study, about three months to length. About three months to length. And they interviewed people within the college, people within the community, all members of the foundation, potential donors, given the chance for a copy of our executive awareness summit, in which the consultant revealed that we had a 98% approval rating internally and a 100% approval rating externally to conduct a major gift campaign. And they said that's higher than any college they've ever worked with in the nation. So we feel very confident going forward that we will have some success. And we appreciate your support and consideration of this profile for enabling us to sit down with the donor in confidence and negotiate an opportunity that we couldn't do otherwise without seeking our group in public.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, David.
Yes, sir.
The next two items under workforce development. And I believe, Jean, you're going to walk us through these two?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So the first item we have is from Bevel State Community College for a mobile welding trainer for instructional purposes. This is actually a follow-up to a previous item we had before you a couple of months ago. And through some conversations and et cetera, the college went ahead and did an additional RFP, and we do have representatives from the college with us here today. And the funding for that would be from ARC, Appalachian Regional Commission. We do have funds for that. And the college is using some unrestricted funds to help cover the balance. And this is really targeted toward Pickens County, and it would include a mobile truck-trailer, the workstations, eight welding booths, the consumer supplies, diesel-powered semi-cabin, et cetera, to ensure that we can deliver the services to Pickens County and the students in that area. So this is a heavily distressed area, and I had the privilege yesterday of actually attending a meeting with ARC. And there's more funds to come. And so this is an excellent opportunity for Bevel State to serve some citizens, and I think this is going to really be well-suited for them. You will also notice in some of their background analysis that this is truly in a high-wage, high-demand area with welding training, and it's going to provide tremendous opportunity for dual enrollment, but also some non-credit training for adults. When they issued the RFP, the bids that came back, they did not receive one from the original vendor that we had looked at before. This is actually based on a little different structure, a little bigger trailer, and it's modeled after the unit that's at, actually at Wallace-Dofen. So it is a very nice mobile unit. There is some information in your packet that shows you the plan view of how the welding units will be laid out, the ventilation, and et cetera. So it's a self-contained unit that we can pick up and move and make it work wherever we need to. And that is the intent of the college as needed. And there are a few pictures of the mobile welding lab from the one at Wallace-Dofen that you can see as well. So the safety concerns, Mr. Smith had expressed a few safety concerns and et cetera before. You do have front and back doors in the ventilation system, like I mentioned. So we tried to cover all those areas that were of concern in the previous meeting and discussion. Any questions?
Jean, I want to thank you and the staff in Bevel for taking advice and openly sharing everybody's comments, because I think what we got out of this is a good communication line, and they're going to give the best of both worlds of what they need. This is an excellent presentation, and I want to thank you and the college for doing this.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments?
The other action item that we have before you is some instructional equipment for the manufacturing and technology program at Jefferson State Community College. And this is actually a, this has been updated from some previous information that you may have had in your packet that was emailed to you. And in the fiscal consideration, there is a little difference in that. And the one thing that I wanted to show you is that they did have a budgeted item for Carl Perkins Funds and some office workforce development funding as well. And then they had a carryover, basically, from FY15 that we allocated from our office workforce development for $83,000. And then they also had some National Science Foundation grant money that they're using for this particular action item. So basically, what you're going to see in this action item, there are several items, one being a robotic welding cell. You're going to see some hydraulic trainers for the manufacturing side. You're going to see some pneumatic trainers for the manufacturing side. There's going to be some online curriculum, which is a very nice piece of that. A coordinate measuring machine, 20 welding machines, and 20 welding booths, a self-contained system. And part of this, that I will tell you, has been driven directly from the advisory committees for Jeff State and this program. And the other one piece, the one piece I really want to bring out, is that coordinate measuring machine is coming from Camtech, which just had a major, major expansion. And this is one of those pieces of equipment that they said that they really needed people coming into their workforce to have those skill sets. So it's an advanced piece of equipment that their students will come out, and it will be a, help them move along a little quicker with Camtech, which is really awesome. If you go over to the background analysis, you'll see in here that Jeff State is serving both the Jefferson campus, this equipment will be at the Jefferson campus in Pinson, and some of the equipment will actually be used at the St. Clair campus, which is in Pell City, which is growing by leaps and bounds. So we're serving, we're serving not only automotive suppliers, but also some of the other manufacturers and the construction industry with the welding to go along with it. So there's a heavy need, and Region Four has expressed a strong desire to have this and has given a great deal of support to Jeff State in their efforts to obtain this equipment. The robotic welding cell, they did originally have two requests, and they reduced that to one to kind of benefit the budget that they had, and to get more welding equipment to suit the program at the Jefferson campus. But they do have other robots available in their program. This is just a step above, and it's also one of those things that the automotive industry is in need of. The hydraulic trainers and the pneumatic trainers are very same situation, or high demand, and so that's some of the training that will be needed for the students. And last, but not least, the two items that are a little bigger profile here is the purchase of the welding machines and the welding booths. Those have not been, the bids have not been opened. They're scheduled to be opened May 31st, so they have estimated $172,000 for the 20 multipurpose welding machines, and those will be located on the Jefferson campus. And then the welding booth actually is a, once again, in some conversations with some of you, that bid is also in process and is expected to be opened May 31st. And this is actually a self-contained ventilation system, so that it's not only for the booths, but the extraction. I have talked with the folks there at Jeff State. They have talked with their electrical contractors to make sure the facility that these machines will be going in, and the booth can handle the load. And they also have worked with the HVAC and ventilation company to ensure that we have proper ventilation for these welding machines. So this is a pretty nice setup. We did, they did go directly to the manufacturers, Lincoln and Miller, so that they try to get the very best price. And so you can see from the work here that they have done a pretty great job in covering all the bases. Are there any questions that I can take at this time?
Are there any agreements with these particular industries in place? I'm just curious. Or we, such as we have with Shelton and Mercedes, as you talked about before?
These folks actually serve on the advisory committee for the program, and so they're directly feeding us, and they're also part of, one of our groups is called CarCam. They've been around for many years, that we have multiple colleges involved. So it's a multi-piece approach.
Got you.
They're driving this. Anything else?
Good president, please.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Jean. I know we've talked from time to time about our adult ed program. We had a couple of presentations, where you've heard from David Walters. One of the areas that he has worked very hard on is, and I think we all talked a good bit about this, is how do we get the word out about our adult ed programs? How do we reach more individuals? How do we increase the numbers? We've got a process here that prepares individuals for the GED at no cost, but we don't seem to be doing a particularly good job reaching them. Well, David has been working with Janet Martin now for some time, and they have developed a media campaign, I guess that's the way to put it. You may have even seen some of the ads. But I've asked David and Janet to come and just simply present to you and give you an update on that campaign and explain a bit more about it.
Good afternoon. I'll keep my remarks brief, very brief, okay? But we do want to share with you the exciting campaign that we were able to work together and develop statewide for adult education. Sometimes adult ed is the best kept secret out there. So we wanted to make sure that we market the great services that we do out there. So we actually created three different commercials that we will be working with. Janet, I'm going to let Janet start off and give a brief overview of exactly the goals of the day.
Talking soundbites. Good afternoon, everyone. David and I obviously are very excited about this, and we hope that you all will share in our excitement. As David said, we talked about how to best approach this, because as the chancellor said, we have, unfortunately, adult ed has been one of those best-kept secrets, and that's not a good thing, because we want people to know about what adult ed does. Our services are free, and we have amazing services across the state. And so we want the people who can benefit best from the services to know about what we offer. And so we talked about what the campaign should be about. We want it to be multifaceted, meaning everybody doesn't get their news and what they know about from one source. The more times you tell somebody, the more that they can get that message. And so we looked at just all the ways that are out there to talk about what we're doing, and it is multifaceted. You'll hear in just a bit, or you'll see in just a bit television, commercials that we produced. We also took the audio from those commercials to do radio commercials, because what we wanted to do was to brand what we're doing. The more that you can keep the message consistent, the more times people say, oh, okay, what I saw is what I'm hearing is what I'm seeing on social media. So we wanted to use those same images and those same messages throughout the campaign. We also did billboards that hopefully you all have seen. They are literally across the state. We had about 60 billboards in just about every county in the state. And so hopefully you've seen some of those billboards. Again, we used the same images from what you see on the commercials in those billboards. We also had what's called geo-fencing. How many of you know what geo-fencing is?
Good.
Well, what we actually did was we were a bit intrusive with our advertising. You can actually, if someone's interested in a particular project or program or product, if they've expressed an interest, we can actually push a message out to them through their tablet or their telephone. And so we can actually, we can be intrusive and actually push that message out to them.
Jean, if I can, can I interrupt just real quick? This is something no other adult ed program in the nation is doing. We are the first to actually do this. I've had colleagues from other states already contact me about how we did it, how we went about it. I've also presented this to the Assistant Secretary of the U.S. Department of Education, and I've actually sent him copies of everything that we've done. So it's very exciting to be in the forefront when it comes to some of these marketing issues.
So for us, Alabama's on the top. We also do social media, which we all know, everybody. Now, we used to try to put that on young people, but we all are on social media all the time. So again, that's why we're able to push that out with no cost. And then newspaper, and I think newspaper ads are kind of going around. We actually did newspaper ads in 300 newspapers across the state through the Alabama Press Association. We did that because we're able to do it at a very low cost. So I think you're going to show those.
And we kept the theme, the more you learn, the more you earn.
Yes, because again, we wanted to brand that. And so you'll see that throughout the commercials, you'll hear that through the radio commercials, and we also did that again with the newspaper advertising.
We have three different commercials. The first one that you'll actually see is really geared toward our career center partners out there. We have a lot of people that are dislocated workers, they need to go back and get academic skills training in order to get employed again. So this is the commercial that we created to really target that. John?
I'm that guy, the one who never finished high school, worked for a company and it shut down. That guy who felt lost. Then I started free adult education classes, saw an opportunity, forget minimum wage, how about maximum wage? And now I'm that guy.
Text my job to 84700 for free adult education classes in Alabama Community Colleges.
The more you learn, the more you earn.
And we are using texting with that. That's something else. There's not many people out there in the field of adult education that choose in texting. So what that does is it gives us the ability to track texts that come into us, and then we can also push out additional messages to them. So not only do we give them a contact within their county, but we can actually put, if we do free GED testing in the future, we have their number that we can push out messages to them.
And one thing you want to do, I'm sorry, one thing you want to do when you spend money on advertising is that you want to call to action. You just don't want to show something to someone, you want them to act on it at that point. So the billboards actually have a 1-800 number, and then the TV. So the billboards actually had a 1-800 number and then the TV and radio spots had the texting information.
Absolutely. John, if you will?
You know me, that girl who dropped out of high school with a baby. A baby needing a better life, just like I do. Then I started G E D classes, close to home and at no cost. Finally, I'm starting a career and a better life.
Text my G E D to 8470. Free G E D classes at Alabama Community Colleges.
The more you learn, the more you earn.
And you'll also notice that we have different taglines. So when they text in, we're able to really track which commercial they actually saw. So we're going to be able to really get some detailed information that this worked in these specific areas of the state. Okay, so that was the G E D one. The next one you'll see is really focused on English language learners. We have a high population of people in our state that needs to learn English skills and we do that through our adult education program. So John, if you will, just show that.
I never finished high school. I struggled with English, barely getting by. But one text changed my life. Free language classes, job training, getting me ready for a career. Finally, opportunity is here. So now, you see me smile.
Text my life to 8470. Free English language classes at Alabama Community Colleges.
The more you learn, the more you earn.
Okay, and I'm going to show you just some billboards. Again, we kept a consistent message, so you'll see many of these throughout the state.
And I want to share just a very quick, cute story with you about branding. My grandson is eight and he had seen one of the billboards someone were outriding. And so then he saw another one, different image but the same message. He said, "No, no, there's another one of your billboards." So even an eight-year-old could see that there was branding and he said, "Right." And then, I don't know, do you want to talk about very quickly the results that we've seen?
Yeah, we're still looking at results, but we've done a couple of things. We actually compared April, the month of April, to this time last year and we're actually increased enrollment by 6%. Now, can we attribute all of that to the marketing campaign? But I think loosely we can do that. We also know that we're up in G E D attainment by 45% compared to this time last year. Okay, so those are great numbers. We're going to continue to look at how this marketing campaign affects what we're doing, but it really, it looks good so far. So we're excited about that. And these are some examples, and we pass out examples as well, but these are some things of actual billboards up throughout the state and some of the newspaper clippings. Okay, and one more important date for you. We have the Adult Education Summer Conference coming up in Birmingham, June the 22nd, 23rd, and 24th. Board of Trustee members, you are invited to attend that. We would love to have you. Presidents, you are invited to attend that as well. Please let Adrian know if you're going to be in attendance and we will take care of your registration fee. I'm done.
Thank you.
Any questions? Does it look good? All right, thank you.
David, Janet, thank you for this. And this is, we need to do more of this throughout the system. We need to get our story out there. So many great things that are going on on all the different campuses, the tremendous programs that the system is offering, the great leadership we've got by the presidents and their staff and the faculty, by the Chancellor and his staff, and we just need to tell our story. This tells your story and great job, I applaud you for it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Any other questions for David or Janet? Great. Thank you both. Thank you both. Okay, that's my top program.
I think Blake had a couple of things he wanted to address and workforce and some other things. You have the floor.
Thank you. I want to go back to our last work session and I had high hopes that I would obtain an education with respect to the presentation and those whom we had invited and frankly was disappointed that that didn't happen. Beyond that, had an opportunity to reflect on it and I do recognize there is an awful lot that I personally do not know and desire to know with respect to how the economic development machine works in the state of Alabama. And how do we fit in that puzzle piece? There are a lot of new organizations, there are a lot of new boards that are, I think, finding their place in the state. Although this is not a new organization, we are a new board. Our one-year birthday today, anniversary today. But I just feel strongly that we as a board need to stake our claim. We have a charge as a board to do workforce development and to prepare the state to be able to fill the many jobs that we know from all the studies that have been done that over the next 10 years are, we don't have the people in the state to fill them. And we have the role of educating people to be able to do that. We do have a strategic plan underway. We were encouraged to do one last month when in fact we already had one underway. And so with as much restraint as I can muster, I just want to say that I want to ask you, Chancellor, to help us understand each of the organizations that were at the table last week. Who are they? How were they formed? What is their mission? What is their charge? How do they fit within the hierarchy of economic development within the state? And how do they fit with the college system? It just seems that some of the things that we're hearing and some of the things that are afoot, there are changes being made and direction being given that potentially supersede things that are under our governance. And I just want, and I think the board also wants to ensure that we understand enough to be out, enough to go out and basically state our case. We don't have to know everything about it, but it's critical that we do know. We are the governing body and we have the authority to approve these things and these boards that have been created are there to help and assist us with the mission we have. That's the way I see it. And we're ready. I'm fully convinced that this board and this system is prepared to move forward, to charge forward and do what we need to do to fulfill our obligation to the state of Alabama. And just ask you to go and help us understand what it is we need to know. And I stand ready and prepared to go wherever I need to in the state to make our case and help people understand what we do, what our role is, and frankly, assert the authority we've been given.
Well, I would be delighted to do that. In fact, I really appreciate you making that request. I think it's very easy as you are, as a state is restructuring certain components of its operation, in this case workforce and workforce development, to head down a road that's not particularly healthy for that state or some of the very agencies that can help most. And like you, I've been very concerned about it and so I welcome that opportunity and we will not only collect that information, but we will report back to you on that.
Well, I'm sorry.
Is it possible to put together a white paper? Maybe specifically address these regions and some of the comments that we're making?
Absolutely, absolutely. And that'll be something we can, each of you can carry away and.
A little bit of the history too, of how certain parts of that organization used to be under the auspices of the college system and is now under the Department of Commerce. And, you know, obviously that's happened, but just want to understand the relationship now versus what we were, how we functioned previously. We all come from, not our heads in the sand, but we came from without these walls and without this organization. So we've got a lot to learn about that. But by the same token, we are very proud, and I'm very proud of, the system, the colleges, the presidents, and everything that's being accomplished. And I want to ensure that we maintain our charge and we're able to maintain our charge and not circumvented by another organization that may or may not be subject to AIC or Saks C O C and may not understand how we have to work within those frameworks. So anyway, I'll push.
No, and I think that's a good point. We obviously have that framework within which we must operate and if you haven't lived and breathed within that kind of system, you don't understand it. And it, you know, you just can't step outside it, but to step outside it can have some pretty serious consequences. But, and I might add something else and you certainly said it in your comments and it's something I've been, you know, I've been concerned about. I think to a president, our institutions have been very responsive to what business and industry is asking. I think we're doing a good job listening. I think we're developing programs that meet business and industry needs. You know, we're making some really, really positive moves in terms of credentialing and certifications and that's in response to business and industry. I think it's incredibly important that we maintain that path, that we're always open to certainly improvement, but I just don't want us to get distracted off of that.
Well, I think that's abundantly clear on the agenda we just covered.
Correct.
We're intimately involved with industry around the state and giving very specific attention to their needs. That was all over this agenda. I've been to Shelton and I've seen that automotive workshop that Mercedes has put three or four vehicles and five or six engines into and frankly, it's very impressive. And, you know, that effort to do that was a response, exactly what I guess I felt we were charged to not be doing. And in fact, we're doing it all over the state. And, you know, branding, as you said, Al, and advertisement from other parts of the system and frankly, lauding what we are accomplishing, I think is critical. Tell the story. Absolutely tell the story.
No, I couldn't agree more. And I would say although we don't have time to talk about them all now, I think everything the colleges are doing and continue to do, it's admirable, but it's been really interesting to see the number of four-year institutions who are now coming to us and want to partner with us. And I promise they wouldn't do that if we were headed down the wrong road. So again, I think the big concern is that we not lose that focus. I know business and industry would be very unhappy if we did. So I appreciate, very much appreciate this request and I think it's going to provide us an opportunity to do exactly what I believe all of you'd like us to do.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Anyone else? I just want to say I agree wholeheartedly with Blake's sentiments and affirm that we're forward to us learning more, Chancellor.
One other, if I could, I just want to thank each of you who met with the Saks representatives and visiting team here today. I'm just, it's such an important part of the process we're going through and also thank you for taking that time.
And if they need to, you better snag us because we're going to be hitting the road here pretty soon. So if there ain't more to be.
And I was at the test.
Yes, please.
I talked to the two that just left the room and they said, because I told them I had to wire the door, if they needed any of the rest of you. And they said that the two this morning did such a good job that all the rest of you are off the hook. All the presidents and vice presidents mentioned they did such a good job that those of you that were here for me at 8:30 this morning, you're off the hook too. The dean's answered all your questions when they pulled them in. So they said no more interviews except for you at 3:00. That's it. And then the exit conference is in the morning, 8:30. Any of the presidents or.
Yes, anyone is welcome. Anyone is welcome to that.
Anyone else? Anything else come before the board? Once again, thank you everyone for your presence. Thank you for your participation and all the information so we can do a better job as a board and we welcome your input at any time. If there's nothing else, we'll stand adjourned.